Good morning. Is it 8:30? I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda. A motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Have there, are there any citizens in the audience this morning wishing to address the board on any item not on the agenda? Any citizens wishing to address the board? Steve, have you had any correspondence in regards to this?
I've not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. They're right here. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. This morning, we'd like to recognize a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Amarsha Haug for our K-9 donation, our K-9 program. Thank you so much, Amarsha. We surely appreciate your incredibly generous donation. Item two, the budget presentation from our, the probation department. Janelle Chaney, the district supervisor. Good morning, Janelle.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Our budget has relatively remained the same. We do contract, Clay County contracts with the state of Minnesota, and so some of the items are impacted by that relationship. So above is the state grant, which is kind of what the county receives back from the state, and that would be in relation to agent positions. And so if I look down at salaries, regular salaries, that references our agents, and so the bill back from the state would be for those positions. And I think currently that's at 27% approximately. I know through legislature this year, they were trying to get that back up to 50%, but that wasn't passed. And then clerical salaries, I have 2.8 within the office, and that's all under the clerical salaries. Sentence to serve, I just wanted to touch base on a little bit. In this calendar year, we haven't backfilled that, and so that has been open since January, and so there would not be a payment due from the county. We have been running the program. We've been very thankful for the JL to look at those that are in custody, offering us two to four individuals to come out on crew, and we've helped with the local days here in the county and maintaining some of the county properties as well. I think for the most part, the rest of the budget pretty much stays on course, not a lot of increases. Overall, a very insignificant increase from last year to this year.
Any further questions for Janelle? Well, this department certainly provides a vital support and resource for the individuals that you serve, and we really do appreciate the coordination with the state for those contracted employees as well.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
Item three this morning is the budget presentation from our attorney's office. Our county attorney, Brian Melton, is here. Good morning, Brian.
Morning, Madam Chair, board members. Good to be here to present the budget. Start with the law library piece that's under my budget. It's cost neutral. The budget piece comes from law library fees through the court and then pays for salary, and really the largest expense would be updates of periodicals. We have a West Law terminal for people to use. So we appreciate the board's support. I know Commissioner Kaylee sits on the board for the law library, and obviously an excellent service to the community, and again, appreciate the support, but again, budget neutral. Unless there's any questions on that, we'll move on to salary or the county attorney's portion. So the county attorney's office part, no real change under the revenues. We are seeing an increase in child support work, 4D that we do and bill through the state. So that is a little bit increased, but obviously we're not really a money-making piece for revenues. Salary-wise, we are, our salary is down a fairly significant portion, mainly because we lost some, four different attorneys that left over the last year. We've replaced those attorneys, but the salary is lower with them being gone. So we're down 4.87% change from last year on salary. Couple other increases to highlight, 6232, printing and publishing. We've been low on that. That's really our, any of our periodicals that we use to do research and our own West Law that we use to research. And the increase in personnel is an increase in cost for West Law. Line 6247, transcripts. It's typically been when we get transcripts from trials that we need to prepare briefs, that type of thing. We've been largely below budget, as you can see, from back in 2021, so looked to increase that up to 5,000. And then I'll just highlight uniforms, 6454. We have a portion that we pay out, and that's been increasing over time with additional attorneys as well. So I look to increase that by $1,800. Really moving on to that, ultimately what I wanted to point out is that if you look to the bottom, the total salary, we're 7.74% under from last year. But with that, what I expect we're going to see in the next year is probably another attorney request next year, is what I expect in trying to keep up with demand, you know, as sheriff's office or police departments increase, social services increase. But at least for now, we're down on salary that way. But what I am looking at, if we move on to the next one, the victim witness advocate side of things, under regular salary, I am asking for an additional victim service coordinator. So currently, we have two full-time and one three-quarter time victim service people. One person who's 32 hours. So if you will, two and three-quarters people working in that office. We service a great deal of victims. Those are, they're the ones that help usher victims and explain things to them about court. They're helping coordinate witness coordination for people that are coming in to testify in trial, all those types of things. With our civil department getting bigger, they're helping with CHIPS cases and coordinating all those witnesses, that type of thing, too. I typically look a lot of times at Blue Earth County, Mankato. They're very similar to us, almost exactly the same attorney-wise. Their victim services, they have six total, so we're at basically three. So I think we're below really what, if you look at them with the same amount of attorneys, fairly same caseload. So with our savings that we have currently from cost of the attorney's office and just some of the costs that we have within regular victim services, even with that additional person added, we would still ultimately be 14% under last year's total budget from 2022. So I think there's a cost savings there with a time period that I think would make sense to add that person. The fact that we lost those other attorneys, replaced them with very good attorneys, but younger attorneys and aren't making as much money, obviously. So this is a time, I think, to add that person, to get them up and ready for that increase that I expect we'll probably see in a year or two with another attorney. So that's the reason I'm asking for it.
Brian, I had a question going back to the law library budget on the line item 6452, which is the periodicals. I know from my time on that board and based on the reports, I know that we're changing some of, some of the material that we're getting, but I noticed that the budget is 85,000, and last year we only used 50, and we're really not on track to use 85,000. It seems as though that would be an area that there should be a little bit of a decrease if there's a fairly large discrepancy in what the actual and what the budget is.
I think two things. So that periodicals, I think, encompass all periodicals, but also the West Law terminal that people will come down and use to do research if they need to. And so that's on a per-person basis of how much is used. I think, I wouldn't want to use 2021 and maybe even current 2022. We'll see where we come out by the end of the year. But I would say last year's with COVID, we had the law library closed quite a bit of time. I think it was just underutilized, just because people weren't out as much. So I don't know that that's going to be the kind of number we'll see. I expect we'll see that increase back up. And if you look back at 2019, we're at 93,000. So it's kind of fluctuated a few thousand. That, I believe that 2021 is probably an anomaly, and we'll see it back up at a higher amount.
Okay. And then my second piece is the line underneath it, the equipment over $500. We've used, budgeted $5,000 every year, and it doesn't look as though we've used that going back to 19. Is that something where it would make more sense to have like an internal service fund for equipment purchases? I'm not exactly sure where, where you'd see that large of a need.
Sure. I think probably a copier would probably be in time if we're looking to replace copier, that type of thing is probably the main thing. So I don't know when we've done that last. So I think we budget that for them in case that, you know, that piece, that type of piece of equipment. That's probably the main thing I can think of that they might be needed. I would say computer-wise, you know, that's not going to be, you know, that much. Just have one law library in for personal use. So, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes. The law library recently has been discussing changing the layout of the library a little bit to add some more table space with the large number of people that have been coming in to use the self-help clinic there. They've been looking at is there some different ways they could shift things around in there. So there might be some furniture purchases that they would want to make in the near future.
And, and that's fine if we need to address that. I, I just struggle if there's a budget line item and we're not utilizing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I'd, I'd have to look back to see if, you know, if we haven't used it for five, six, seven years. It's been just the last three. I don't know, to be honest with you, Madam Chair. I typically, yeah, it's going to be a bigger purchase that we've budgeted for or have that ready if we, if we need it.
Okay. Commissioner Gross?
I just had a question on uniforms. What uniforms do we supply for here?
It's for suits, suits or professional wear for the attorneys. I mean, that's something that's negotiated within the-
A contract?
Within the contract. Just, just like uniforms for police departments, they've negotiated to say uniforms such as ostre suits or other professional wear for women.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
I think each one, each person gets, Darren's not just Darren here, is it 500 a piece or 1,000 now? I don't know what they each get. It's 750. I think each person gets about 750, which equates to hopefully buying close to one suit, if you will.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Campbell?
Brian, on the, on your new request under, for your attorney, it looks like you have that position showing as a new request to part-time salary.
Right, under, are you, are you talking under the victim witness piece?
No, no, I'm talking about just under your county attorney's budget.
Oh.
It's a new request of 30,560.
You're right. Sorry, I should have addressed that. That is the piece of the ARPA funding that's still out there. So the ARPA committee allotted, allowed me for a one-year individual with the potential to have a second year.
And 2023 would be the second year?
Correct.
Okay. And so, so that new request, somehow, Steve, we're going to have to footnote these, that these, these might be covered by ARPA dollars again, right?
That would be, right. Yeah, I forgot to highlight that. You are correct. That is out there. That is an ARPA.
And when you, and then going to your victim witness one, that's, that's the one where it's 52,000?
Correct.
And then, so when we make those, we generally plan as though the benefits would be for a full family type, you know, for example, we have-
Right, the health insurance and the-
The health insurance is, we're anticipating that it would be a full cost of a family. In some cases, though, we don't know at the time until they're hired.
True.
But that number could be somewhat less.
Could even be less. Even though we're below still, right, the new request being 80,798, it could be less because that is a, that health pair of social security-
Right.
Put in as a traditional.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that would be right around, if it was a single, it'd be about 11,000, a little over 11,000.
About half. Little less than half, yeah. Okay. But we do, but we don't know that until the position's hired, so. I think you had mentioned there wasn't too much. Oh, never mind. Yeah, I guess I was looking at your revenues here.
On what?
And I do see that it's-
On which?
On, on the county attorney's budget. The number that you're showing is 365 for projected or proposed, and the budget that you had for 2022, you anticipated 420. That's, that's about 55,000.
Right. So, so a few things that we don't, so the restorative justice grant is not, so some of those grant dollars aren't coming in like they used to. They're reducing down, and in another year, I think they'll be gone. So that went from 30 to 1750. The miscellaneous refunds is from the state. I get that dollar amount each year from Lori of how much we're, we're gaining back. So that's down from 350. You can see it varies year to year.
Right.
That's a, that's a provided number from the state that we get for refund. So it's down to 332. So those are, and then the collaborative dollars, again, for helping with RJ, that's no longer available. So it's a few of the grants that have kind of run their, their course, and that's where we've, we're no longer doing RJ within ourselves, but we've, we've gone to getting RJ, or at least that next two years of serving within the school that we hope will, will kind of produce some, some things for us here in the future.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? All right. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item four today is a request to fill a vacancy for the juvenile center counselor, our superintendent, James O'Donnell. Good morning, James.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request to fill a vacancy we have in our secure facility. It's in our 2022 budget. It's part of our mandated staffing plan. Somebody got any questions?
Questions for James?
Move to approve.
A motion from Commissioner Gross to approve this request, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next piece is number five, a request, final approval of the contract for the juvenile center with our Advanced Correctional Healthcare, Inc. You have that again?
All right. Thank you. I'm here today with a contract that's broken out. They were negotiated together with the correctional facility to get the costs in line and as cheap as possible. But the individual services between the correctional facility and the juvenile center are different, and there's different needs for both. So the contract's broken out between ours and them. The one before you today is juvenile center specific. Some of the major differences that's going to be added on, not added on, expanded on our services. And basically, we, we have a, the healthcare service company provides a responsible health authority. That's an MD type of a person that's in charge of the clinic. That's mandated by licensing, and this contract provides it, but also provides onsite nursing seven days a week. We currently have five days a week of nursing. So this will add the, the weekends also, which, as you know, we're a 24/7 facility, and we definitely get intakes on weekends, and this eliminates our staff having to make decisions and/or refer to local clinics and hospitals for basic RN services. There'll be a weekly visit by an MD. They'll prescribe medication within their scope of practice. The big one for us is the medication management piece. They will be responsible for ordering, giving all the medications and the correct amounts. It's kind of critical and complex with our population. About two-thirds of our youth take some sort of psychotropic medication. That, that's very important and significant to get it on time, the correct dose, and to not miss doses. Another big piece for the juvenile center is that the nurse will be part of our team and work with local providers, Lakeland, LSS. We provide a whole slew of different services and different professionals that come in on an individual basis to work with individual kids. We need our nurse to be part of that team, in individual teams. Overall, the cost for a year is 463,000. Two-thirds of that is split between 11 member counties, and one-third of that is Clay County's. It's looking for a three-year contract starting August 1st, so a couple of weeks.
Great overview.
Is there a nurse there that 24/7?
Nope. Currently, we have a nurse there in the morning from about 8 to 4:30. This one will provide a nurse from 8 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock at night, five days a week, and then eight hours a day on the weekends.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve this request.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. James, I just would really like to say that, one, you do an amazing job making sure that you take care of the needs of the kids that you're, you're serving. So this is one step to making sure that we're addressing a piece of their, their help while they're there. So thanks for the work. I know it's hard work, and you do a really good job.
You got good staff.
Anything else? Commissioner Campbell?
James, on, we're having our meeting on Thursday, right? I'm wondering, could we, you and I and maybe Commissioner Ebinger, meet an hour early? I haven't had a chance to review your agenda yet, but I'm assuming we're going to be going over a proposed budget too, and how that incorporates here. And I guess, when I chair that, I'd like to get, make sure that I am up to speed on-
Well, definitely. I would appreciate that very much.
So maybe if we could meet here at 9:30?
Will do.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with you, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And also of note, this contract has been vetted through our county attorney's office. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Commissioner Ebinger, would you like to start today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wednesday, the 13th, I virtually attended the Joint Northwest Emergency Communication Board and RAC meeting. We, nothing really unusual on the, from Brian's astropill, Clay County has completed the radio inventory the state's requiring to make sure that interoperability is working throughout the state. We completed that some time ago. There's still a couple of departments, counties in our, in our district that still have to do that, and we discussed making sure it got done. In grants, where there's a training grant that's come in, and needs were discussed for interoperability, interoperative systems, particularly in light of some of the, the active shooter issues we've seen that have hit smaller communities. So there's going to be a focus on that to make sure not only are the dispatchers trained, but the equipment is there, and the officers are familiar with that to communicate between departments. There's also funding coming in for mental health training for, for both responders, dispatchers, and some of the grant work that's being done through SAMSA to get mental health services for first-line personnel. There's been a request from the Fargo VA to get, have access to the ARMOUR system, and that's going to take place. As we all know, Fargo and Cass County are both part of the Red River Dispatch Center, and as a result from prior agreements, they're part of the Minnesota ARMOUR system. And Fargo does, the Fargo VA does not want to actively dispatch on our channels, but they want access to those channels and the local groups, talk groups, for their response in conjunction with Cass County, Fargo, and anything else that happens here in the metro. And that's being worked on. And then a whole lot of technical stuff that I don't think I'll bore us with, but we had about two hours of that. And it's great to know that we've got Brian's astropill with the Red River Dispatch Center, because not only does he understand the technicalities and the complexities of this, but he actually works for the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board as their consultant on, on technology. So he keeps us in the tip of the spear on this. Friday, the 17th, I attended the Board of Directors workshop for review of the diversion authorities draft of governance policies. As we move into the building phase, and we're not just trying to acquire land and funding, there needs to be some policies that are set for long-term. We discussed this at a retreat here late last year, I believe it was, Commissioner Campbell, but where we determined we needed policies to be set up and not just trying to, to base the whole operation on the memorandum of, of understanding that we've got. So there's, there's been a, an effort to put that together. We recover, we reviewed the Board of Governance policies, executive director policies, and operational expectation policies that are in the, in the draft version that we got. There's going to be a realignment of some of the committees, and that's going to be discussed with the whole board here in probably the upcoming meeting, if not the one right after that. Joel Paulson and Jeff Schatz, former Fargo School Superintendent, have been working on this, and it's a work in progress at this time, but it's a very good start. Very impressive amount of work done on that. Later that day, I attended the Clay County Fair, and I will admit, although I've lived here for 16 years, it's the first time I went to the fair, and I was pretty impressed. Great setup by the Sheriff's Department using their emergency response field trailer that they've got, and they invited the rest of the Clay County staff to set up over there. It was a great location. It worked great. Got a chance to talk to a lot of the citizens out there. Was joined by Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell when I was out there. And I think Mr. Mojo was somewhere out there in the, among, among the-
I was there the whole time. I camped there.
But it was, I was impressed. I enjoyed my time out there, and despite the fact it was a hot day, it was, it was certainly a fun trip. Then on Monday, yesterday, and the 18th, speaking of hot, we were out there, a number of us- Then on Monday, yesterday, on the 18th, speaking of hot, we were out there, a number of us, for the opening of the 20th and 21st Street underpass. This has been something that started really before I even lived here, but throughout my entire career as police chief, we had frustrating experiences of trying to get by the trains and have emergency response. That was addressed through this. A much quicker and cleaner trafficway between 94 and Highway 10 is established with this. Just a great thing. And I enjoyed the opening, but one thing I really want, one person I really want to acknowledge, he gave a speech there and was very humble and gave his staff and everybody else credit. But Dr. Bob Zimmerman, the city engineer from Morehead, is a rock star, and this was very much, it was a difficult build between COVID and soil deterioration and other things they had to address. And Bob, as always, was just a champ at getting this thing through, and he deserves a lot of credit for that. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell.
On Tuesday, July 12th, we had a highway tracking meeting. Items of note, the CASA 12, CASA 31, and CASA 52 projects were all complete. And then the CASA 1, that's the grading portion of the project, that was to start in two to four weeks, so I'm assuming that's, we're probably a week or two away now from when that meeting was held. Probably the biggest issue that we looked at that's concerning is the, Justin's, we've asked Justin to do a review of our five-year plan trying to incorporate current project numbers or dollars based on current prices. And it's a significant change, that five-year plan. I believe in the fifth year before, we were looking at being in the negative about $68,000. With the new numbers they're talking about, that number went to $4 million negative. And when we say that, we're allowed to advance our state funding, so we'd probably up to 100% of our state funding, so we could theoretically still come close to being able to complete all those projects. But at this point, it is looking like it could be difficult, and so we're going to do a complete review of that and to determine if some projects might have to be flipped within that five-year plan. But what it does tell us is unfortunately, it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to, like in some cases where we've been able to add some additional projects because bids, prices did come in favorable, you know, over the last few years, but that's no longer the case. But we will be monitoring that, we will continue to work on that in our Highway Tracking Committee. I don't know if Commissioner Gross wants to add anything to that. He did talk about a few staffing issues, and I want to compliment Justin, and he's making a lot of these township meetings in the evenings and going over and making sure that their needs are met, whether it's on township roads or township bridges. So hats off to Justin and his new position for doing that. Then on the July 24th, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Meeting in Fergus Falls. A lot of issues came up within their insurance. There's, they are, even though Clay County didn't renew with them this last time around, they did get, they have gotten some new members coming in. I can't remember the names of the different organizations, but they got another 100 and some new contracts in. The one thing that was on the program or on the agenda that we talked a little bit about that is the YES Program that's held here in Morehead. And that program has been negatively funded for a long time, to the point where the discussion is going to be held whether that program can continue or not. And, you know, we have about 40 kids in that program, and I think about 75% of them are Clay County kids. So it's of significant concern. You know, it's a very valuable program. It's a place where some kids just can't meet necessarily the high school setting or whatever, and so they have an alternative place where they can go and ultimately end up getting a high school diploma. So I've asked that we have further discussions about this, and I even mentioned that it might be something for us to have in our Clay County, our new name for our Clay County inner government to review that. I know, according to Jeremy Kovash, our Executive Director at Lakes Country Service Cooperative, he says that Morehead and, Morehead still wants that program, and they want to, you know, they want to see it stay. However, a lot of that funding has come from Lakes Country, and so, you know, there's some discussion about whether they can continue to fund that in that negative way. So I've asked to have further discussions with Brandon and anybody else who could be involved to make sure that we can try to keep that open. So that's said on that one. Then we did, as Commissioner Ebinger had mentioned, we had our full board, Diversion Authority Board Retreat Friday morning, and we did go over the proposed new governance policies and the committee change structures that will be proposed moving forward as we go from a, you know, we described this for many years, this was like a fundraising organization to obtain the funds to build it. That's now completed, and we're into the construction phase, which there gets to be some change in how committee structure should be. And then ultimately, the end goal would be down to when it's complete, the operations and maintenance, and all of those require a little bit different structure than what we're currently under. So hats off to Dr. Schatz, too, who, boy, he was instrumental in working us through this, and it was complicated. I served on the executive group that did the draft, and we had, I think we must have had five or six meetings that were two- to three-hour meetings each to review this and before bringing it forward. And Commissioner Ebinger had mentioned, I think the timeline on that is we want to see it complete and move forward for the board approval. When I say the board, it's the Diversion Authority Board by the October meeting. Prior to that, we've asked that Executive Director Paulson go to each of the governing entities, including ours, and be on the agenda to give a overview of the proposed changes and how that structure will look. So I'm assuming we'll see that sometime between now and maybe September. And then after that, then, then I did get out for a little bit to the county fair on Friday afternoon. I enjoyed my cheeseburger at the 4-H food stand along with Commissioner Ebinger. He got chips, I didn't.
You're going to rat me out.
But I did sneak in some fair doughnuts on my way out. And then, you know, I do want to comment on the ribbon-cutting history. I did not make that, but the city of Morehead and all those involved, it's really going to be an impressive situation when it's done. I'm looking forward to that same thing happening on 11th Street North. That's the one I think is probably critical in terms of public safety. I've said that all along. But anyway, I think it's amazing, and although at the county level, we didn't have a lot to do with that project, we certainly supported it all along and we're extremely happy to see that done. I think it's Friday, they're going to start having public traffic through there, so that's really good. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross.
Okay, Tuesday, I had the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, which Commissioner Campbell has already covered, but he was talking about that five-year plan, you know, as of this time, I mean, the pavement is already going up 15%, you know, so, I mean, that's just this year already. So when you're looking at a five-year plan, you know, we really got to adjust that thing, I think, for up, unless the costs are going to come down again, which very seldom happens, but even the gas tax, there's been less driving, doesn't seem that way, but they're saying there's less gas tax available.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Along with that, what's really important here, so our five-year plan incorporates exactly what Commissioner Gross talked about. Our main revenue source for all of that work is the revenues coming from the gas tax. And so we're in our five-year plan, that $4 million deficit that I talked about compared to where we are now, that doesn't even change. We're not even, that doesn't even consider the potential for a lower amount of state funding coming in. Keep in mind that where we receive the money, it's based on the number of gallons sold, you know, in the state of Minnesota for gas. And if the, you know, when the prices are $5 a gallon, guess what? They're not selling as many gallons, you know? So that can even further complicate our five-year plan as long as those numbers stay. So I'm glad you brought that up.
And you got to look at more electric vehicles out there, too, you know, so, again, they're not using the gas as much, so, I mean, we're just going to get less money from the gas tax. And as far as township maintenance, we discussed that, that Justin was going out, and last week I went out to Riverton Township with Justin, and I went out to Linden Township with Justin, and we discussed the bridges that they're going to be working on in both of those townships. And both places, they discussed County Road 12, as far as doing some work in there, they'd like to see that paved, sort of coming off 12, coming off the Highway 336 to go all the way across over the shortcut to the interstate. So looking at that one. Justin's also going to be looking at some additional, there's a road foreman that's going to be retiring this summer or this fall, so we've got to look at filling that position. Also, the Assistant Engineer position, there's, I don't know if they got applications for it yet, but as of last week, they didn't have any applications for that position yet. So we're going to keep advertising for that. Also, the Linden Turn Lane, that project was supposed to be worked on this summer, but we have received no bits on that yet, so they're going to rebit that thing. And we're also looking at the CDL licenses, what the county's going to do, whether we're going to participate in a program to help people pay for their CDL licenses, or however we're going to handle that thing. As I said, I went to the Linden Township meeting, I went to the Riverton Township meeting and discussed the bridges and the blading of roads. Linden Township had some concern about the, we were there earlier this spring and talked to them, and they're still a bit concerned about the road blading, and we're going to keep working on that. They were also concerned about County 17 Bridge, but as Justin explained to them, it's not efficient enough yet, so there'd be no work done on that yet, it's on the radar, but not going to do any additional work on that. The fair, I went on the fair Friday afternoon with a few of the guys there, and we, you know, I have to agree, it was a good setup there by Sheriff Empting and his crew, so we helped out a few people there. This, I think, I don't know whether, going from Thursday to Friday, I think Friday's a better day for it, probably more people there, but there's still, there's a lot of people there, but we didn't get just too many there. I mean, probably the first couple, I wasn't there the first couple hours, but the last couple hours, I don't know what we can do more for them, but I think it's a good program to keep setting up there. Also went out there again on Sunday to hand out ice cream, and there again, I think we have to come up with a different system there or put it in a different spot. People didn't seem to be aware of where it was at, so.
I think the problem with that 5:30 is it typically works, however, due to the extreme heat, they did early dismissal for families with livestock, and those are a lot of the people that typically eat the ice cream, and it's just, it's hard. I think that maybe moving it to about the time when we're doing the awards around 12:30, when it used to be about the same time as that seems to be about.
Yeah, I think we have to do more, like you say, they let everybody take their 4-H projects out of there, and everything was pretty well cleared out of there already, and it got to be pretty, I mean, sparse, so I had to eat a lot of ice cream.
Did you have doughnuts with it?
And then yesterday, the underpass, I mean, that is just amazing when you go down there in that area. I mean, that's an enormous structure there that they put up there, and it's just, I was just amazed at it standing down at the bottom of that underpass and looking up and all that cement work that was done, and just praise to all those firms that worked on that, you know? That was just a great project, and it's just great to be driving through that thing. I mean, I know it's going to be a big accomplishment for Morehead there, you know, but just looking at that structure down there, that was just amazing. They did a lot of work. I mean, it took a long time, but they did a great job, so I guess that was my findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tuesday, the 12th, the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Leadership Team met to plan our meeting for today at 3:00 PM in the Family Service Center. This is going to be a great meeting if you've never come to one of those meetings before, because we're going to go over what that Local Advisory Council actually is, what their mission is, and then we'll have great reports from providers in the area as well and some refreshments. So everyone is invited to the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council meeting at 3:00 PM today. That same day, I also attended the Morehead City Planning Commission meeting. We just had two public hearings. One was for a vacation of easements within Astorup Second Edition that passed unanimously to go on to the city council. And then there was a request from Verizon Wireless for text amendments to Morehead City Code, which would allow wireless companies to put transmitters on top of existing poles in the area. So instead of putting in new poles and having large setbacks, they would be able to utilize existing poles to extend their services. That was it for that meeting. Wednesday, the 13th, a subcommittee from our Early Childhood Initiative met to discuss a training coming up this fall. We're having a presentation on talking to new Americans about mental health, which will be targeted towards providers, childcare providers, social services, public health, educators, anybody who is working with families of new Americans and would want to better understand how to build relationships and communicate about mental health better. That training is going to be scheduled for the first Friday in October. We're still solidifying our venue, but it's going to be a great training. We're also going to have a panel at that training featuring representatives from our local minority communities, talking specifically about their cultural background and what they would like providers to know. Stay tuned for more information on that. Thursday, the 14th, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. Great meeting. We talked about the next meeting coming up with the MPCA to discuss the issue with inspections of feedlots. Will be coming up on July 28th to go over that paperwork. Craig and Gabe have submitted all of the paperwork again for the 700. Craig and Gabe have submitted all of the paperwork again for the seven inspections that were done last year to try to correct any issues and waiting to hear back from MPCA about if there's still any remaining things that need to be fixed. Yeah.
I had just gotten a invite to, and I think they'd sent it only to me and to Kevin Kastenberg and Craig, and I forwarded it to Commissioner Mojo. I couldn't send it to both of you.
Sure, yeah.
But I think there is an upcoming meeting again on that.
I think that's the same one she's talking about.
Oh, okay.
I think I had received one from them. They may have just included you to follow up because they initially.
Okay, yeah.
I'm out of the loop on that email, so maybe if Steve could send something.
But I, through, through the chain, I wanted to make sure that you got it, but I.
It's just the email or the placeholder on the calendar.
Okay.
Next week, right?
28th.
Yep. We talked about the computerized pest testing that they proctor at SWCD. They're planning to start charging a $25 proctor fee. And that is primarily the people that come in are from Vector or their employer. And it's a three-hour test and so we have to have a staff person there monitoring that test taking for three hours, which pulls them out of the field from planting trees or, or other things like that. So we felt a $25 proctor fee was not out of line and it's something that most other counties do. That fee would also go towards computer maintenance and, and things like that, because they're using our computers when they take those tests. Craig noted that he's thinking about retiring in November and there was a discussion about taking a look at the current staffing plan to look at shifting duties around and hiring with an eye to future growth of the organization. So there might be folks already within the organization that would be best suited to shift duties a little bit and then really maximize whoever that new employee might be for that organization. There was recently a meeting that the Morehead Police Department had with businesses in that neighborhood, looking at kind of an uptick in crime around there. And they had done an assessment of the building and they've had a few issues with vandalism and things. So they're looking at increasing lighting around the building to deter crime. And last year, the SWCD Fall Tour had been canceled due to COVID. It was supposed to be right on Commissioner Ebbinger's and, and my birthdays are pretty close together. And so that was gonna be our birthday party, but it got canceled on us. Anyway, they're looking at doing that again this year and the tentative date that they're looking at is September 8th. So that would be a tour of a lot of the projects in the area and then an update from them. I also attended the underpass ribbon cutting. That's been well covered. It was a very joyful day despite the heat to be out there and I look forward to driving through it soon. I would also like to note that this Saturday, July 23rd at 1:00 PM, will be an opening for the updated ship gallery at the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County. So it's the 40th anniversary of the YumComps Voyage. Original crew members will be there. There'll be a ribbon cutting and free admission that day. So Saturday, July 23rd, starting at 1:00 PM, come enjoy the new ship gallery and meet some of the new crew members. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a subcommittee of the Planning Commission to discuss the aggregate overlay zoning districts that we have throughout the county. Matt Jacobson, our planning director, has identified a number, a number of parcels that had this overlay district applied round about the early 2000s. And, and currently, it just doesn't make sense to continue to have those overlay districts on those properties, mainly because they're within the jurisdiction of cities or they have heavily, they've been heavily developed with residential. Certainly, any additional development will need to go through proper permitting processes, but because this doesn't seem to be an appropriate overlay for that area anymore, it's really a hindrance for residents who live within that. Certainly, we will continue to take in all of the, the environmental concerns and will continue to protect aggregate resources throughout the county as needed. It was just a subcommittee, so there will be further discussion on that. And I want to give a huge gratitude to the Clay County Fair Board, our extension staff and the countless volunteers that put on the county fair last year. Those individuals really do so much with limited resources and it really is a fantastic gathering of folks throughout our community. I know that in the past, we've talked about whether our presence makes sense on a county government day and it doesn't appear that we get too much interaction with people, but to have all five commissioners present at the county fair for the first time since I've been elected to this board, it did not go unnoticed and there were countless people that told me so. And I just really want to continue to thank this board for the support that we've given, not only the extension, but the Clay County Fair Board throughout the years. It really is important. They are currently in the process of raising funds. Their bathroom facilities are no longer handicap accessible. That's something that's very, very important with them. They've had discussions with West Central Initiative in regards to them being a fiduciary advisor, but if any of you have connections to grant opportunities for such improvements, they are, are really trying hard to raise the funds to not ask for an addition to this, from this board. But it is a disservice to have a community event like that, that is not accessible for folks with handicap or mobility concerns. And so I'm just hopeful that we can find support somewhere for that. But also thanks to Commissioner Gross for stepping in. Commissioner Kaylee was gone and I was loading hogs at that point for serving ice cream for the extension committee. We really do appreciate that. And then yesterday, I also attended the ribbon cutting. Mr. Leaser here and I really benefited from the train problem in Morehead in our high school years, meaning that we always had a standing excuse for being late to school. And so I'm sure that begrudgingly, high school graduates will no longer have that excuse, but really to see such an enormous project come to fruition and really help accessibility and emergency responses and just all transit pieces come together, it really is a celebration. Not without sacrifice, as the mayor of Morehead said yesterday. Certainly, the businesses and citizens that lived close to there really had to deal with several nuisances, but hopeful that I think here the lights are going up today and it will be open on Friday. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. When I talked about the fair, I think it's important to acknowledge all of our county staff who attended and worked on our behalf, talking about the different services that we provide as a county and doing it under that heat and stressful situation, I think was, but anyway, thank you to them for that work. And I did have the opportunity to drive back on Highway 52. And those of you who haven't taken Highway 52 from Morehead to Barnesville should do so. It's an amazing, amazingly good road all the way now from Barnesville to, to Morehead. And again, that's a credit to our highway department for the work and planning that they've done there. And those of you who want an alternative route that has a lot to see, take it. It's excellent. That, and their most recent portion from Saban to Morehead is really, really nice.
That road Friday afternoon too.
Yeah.
That is a busy road.
Yeah, it's a busy road and it, yeah, it's a really, it's, it's glad to see and that hopefully that will, will stay in that shape for many years to come. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I also attended the highway tracking meeting that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross have mentioned. I would just, I'll make of note in, in regards to highway, there is a temporary closure tomorrow on County Road 76. That's 40th Avenue South at the intersection of Highway 52. They're doing some railroad maintenance, so it should be just one day. And also, starting yesterday, we did have a closure on Cassa 11 between 28th Avenue North, 90th Avenue North. We had some buckling with the extreme heat over the weekend. There's, there is a detour that goes through Cassa 9 and they hope to have that done by next Monday, end of, end of next Monday. The 12th, and if there's any questions, citizens can go to our website. It's in our spotlight section. Last Tuesday, I also met with Troy Ammons in regards to the, to the Substance Abuse Center. Did meet, had some discussions with Klein McCarthy. They've proposed a tentative design schedule. I, I guess it's up to the board. My, my thought process was is going back to the design piece, we would return that to Detox. Again, the board's wishes there, with the understanding that we have our first meeting tomorrow morn, tomorrow afternoon at 1, 1:00 PM. Troy and Joe, Joe had been working on RFPs. They've been, they're gonna be reviewed by Mr. Leaser here at the end of the week and we hope to have that in the papers by July 27th, if all works out as planned. The 12th, we had a meeting with social service budget. That's gonna be before this board for next week. We had county management on the 13th. We talked about the fair, our 2023 budget and Darren had a number of human resource reminders. Again, just following up Commissioner Campbell's comments, appreciate that. We had staff from GIS, HR, highway, social service, veterans and of course, our sheriff's department. So thank, thank you for all of your attending. 13th, I also had the county attorney's budget that we heard this morning. Had a meeting that afternoon, solid waste budget with Brett Rice and Shannon Thompson. We met again on Thursday morning. Also, Thursday morning, we had probation budget, which we heard this morning. Met with Joe Wilson that afternoon on a series of county facility issues. Participated again in the county government days that had been mentioned. Again, we want to thank the board for their flexibility in shifting days and location of where we met the public. And so 18th, we had a planning zoning budget discussion that will be before the board next week. Also met yesterday with Mr. Leaser and we talked in regards to his new roles and expectations and pending, pending issues here within the county. So he's up to date a little bit, at least on some of those things. And then also participated, as been mentioned, the 20th and 21st Street Underpass ribbon cutting. Next, next Monday, I'm gonna be participating in a regional workforce strategy put on by the Chamber and the Greater Forum of Morehead Economic Development Group, looking at for Fueling the Future Part 2.0. Also, just for the board's knowledge, the Chamber has put in a request this year for $100,000 as part of the 2023 budget process for, to, to address workforce talent development and also policy and advocacy. And so Shan, most likely Shan, will be here before this board at some time this summer. Again, this afternoon, we have a District 4 legislative wrap-up at Morehead City Hall from 4:00 to 5:00. That is a posted meeting for those of you that are hoping to attend. I know that you worked with Klein, all of you, to, to register for that. And then just of note, today, we had James here this morning with the ACH contract. Next week, my understanding is Carrie Tooten, jail administrator, was on vacation last week and so she'll have that contract here before you guys next week. And just, just wanted to note through your ongoing negotiations that we agreed, as you recall, the Juvenile Center contract was going to be ending at the end of this month. The Correctional Facility was going to be ending at, at the end of August. And through our, some negotiations back and forth with MEND, we agreed that we are gonna end one month early. The final payments were made through, through MEND, through our two MENDs this morning as part of the bills and vouchers. And so ACH will be starting in both facilities on August 1st. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything for us?
No, Commissioner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Rita? All right, we are adjourned.